Barry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you, Madam Clerk. So. Was that funny?
I was waiting to be called.
Don't worry, you're gonna get called often enough. I'm sure you all realize or understand why we're here this afternoon. I was thinking about it this morning, and it's kind of a mixed blessing melancholy-type afternoon. I know that. Well, I was gonna introduce important people, but there's too damn many of you important people in the room. So, we'll catch you on the fly. But I was thinking this morning. I've known Arlene Schaefer pretty much my entire life, and I've had a long life so far. And when you share the last name with one of the most important people in the community, people confuse you and think that you two are related. And over the year, what the fact that she spells Schaefer wrong has nothing to do, has nothing to do with what I'm gonna say, but over the years, my father worked for Mesa Water for a long time, Shorty Schaefer, and people always assumed that my dad and Arlene were married. Now, if they'd looked at the last names, they probably could have figured out they weren't, but why sweat the small stuff? But they had a great relationship. My dad was absolutely so respectful of Arlene and thought the world of her. They did have a close working relationship. She could have been my mom, and I wouldn't have been too unhappy, but I liked my mom a lot, too, so. And so did so did Arlene. But professionally and in other areas, service club work in other areas, Arlene and I have gotten to know each other. And now I know why my dad felt so strongly about Arlene. It's easy to do. It really is easy to do. And if you don't, she'll make you do it. Right? But over the years, people would say to me, oh, is is Arlene Schaefer your mother? And of course, that didn't sit well with Director Schaefer because she didn't think she was that much older than me, and she's probably not. I mean. So we decided that if people asked us if we were related, I would say, Arlene is my cousin. Even though the last names are spelled wrong. But over the years, I have become so grateful to serve and to work in this community with someone who's a true legacy in the city of Costa Mesa. Planning Commissioner, a City Council Member, Mayor of Costa Mesa, a Director here at the Sanitary District, a representative to the State Special Districts Association. There are so many things that we could list and give her credit for. And I know she'd appreciate that, but she'd also kind of shake her head a little bit if you did that. Although, I remember we used to go to Chamber of Commerce breakfast, and they would go around the room, and you had to introduce yourself. And Arlene would give her litany of her accomplishments. And I'm just quoting her, I didn't come up with this. She'd say, I am a woman of experience. And I wish all of us could share in those experiences with Arlene Schaefer because she is truly, truly a legacy in this city and in this community and and to folks all over the state of California. We are, the melancholy part of it is, I'm gonna miss not having her sitting here reminding me I didn't call on her to speak. Or at one of her last meetings, she got mad at me because I wouldn't let her make a motion. Well, with these two knuckleheads sitting to my left, there's no way to get any, let her get, but but we did, and we're gonna miss you, you know?
I'm gonna miss all of you.
Well, we know that, so. At this time then, now that I've, before I break down, and I probably won't break down, I would like to, actually, I'm gonna do something out of the ordinary. A lot of us don't get credit for things, and that's good, that's the way it should be. But I would like to introduce the spouse of of Bob Ooten, Dr. Cheryl Ooten. Stand up, Cheryl. My wife, Sandy Schaefer. She spells it correctly. Art Perry's wife, Joan isn't here because she's got a broken wrist. And your husband is probably working, Nicole, right? So, anyway, I'm gonna ask our General Manager, Mr. Scott Carroll, to give some remarks or do whatever you're gonna do.
Thank you, Mr. President. President Schaefer, so my name is Scott Carroll, I'm the General Manager for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. So what makes today bittersweet is that we're not just saying goodbye to a Costa Mesa icon. We are celebrating a legacy. And that's what public service is all about, right? We want to leave something behind that's lasting and meaningful. And Arlene, you're leaving a legacy that will continue to shape the district for years to come. For over 28 years on the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board, Arlene has been instrumental in countless achievements that you've probably heard of. One, she she led the transition from manual trash collection services to automated services that helped make operations more efficient and cost-effective. She approved the first curbside organic recycling program in Southern California, turning food and green waste into renewable natural gas. And that program has been implemented for 10 years. And in 10 years, we have diverted over 85,000 tons of organic materials away from landfills. She supported the move from a mixed-waste collection system to source separations by introducing the blue lid recycling cars, which I'm sure all of you have seen recently. On the wastewater side, Arlene championed power redundancy for all 20 pump stations. And it's not uncommon when we have a power outage here in Costa Mesa that we'll have two or three pump stations lose power simultaneously. Because now we have a redundancy power, the power immediately comes on, we don't lose any service. That is because of Arlene. She envisioned the planning and construction of the district's award-winning lead platinum, the Rob Hemers Yard, which centralized wastewater operations and improved efficiencies. And of course, let's not forget this building, we're all in here right today, right? She was instrumental in approving the acquisition of this building to improve services to the community. And she expanded wastewater operations by adding cleaning crews and modern equipment and a dedicated pump station maintenance team that has greatly reduced the number of sewer spills each year and the ability to capture spills before they reach our waterways. These are just some of the highlights by Arlene. I could go on and on of all the accomplishments you made and the legacy you left for this, on this district. On a personal note, I mean, some of you might know Alan Roder, a former City Council Member here. Also, Neil McCormick, who's who's the Chief Executive Officer for the California Special Districts Associations. The three of us have something in common. We were all hired by Arlene. And we've all still, well, the exception of Alan's retired, but Alan has, we've all stayed at our job for many years because, quite frankly, Arlene's just a joy to work with. She's always been respectful, supportive, and deeply appreciative of the hard work it takes to be a leader in an organization. In fact, I don't know if you know, but I have been honored to be recognized as the General Manager of the Year from CSDA in 2013 and 2022. Well, guess what? Arlene was the one who nominated me, for those of you. So, again, that's that's who she is, is always thinking of others and lifting them up. Arlene, thank you for hiring me, for trusting me, and for giving me the opportunity to serve this great organization and this great community. I will miss our one-on-one meetings, traveling with you to CSDA Conference, and your steady, trusted voice of reason. You'll be missed but never forgotten. Thank you so much, Arlene, for your service.
That's why he was District Manager of the Year, he's such a smooth talker. We do have, there'd be lots of presentations, but on behalf of the board and the staff, staff of the Sanitary District, could you all just kind of wave your hands so everybody knows who the really important people are? On be on behalf of the staff in the district, we are going to give Arlene a trash truck. Now, before you before you wonder if it's gonna be driving down your street dripping oil, it's not. Right, Julie? Okay, Mike. CRNR helps us do these, this is a trash truck made out of Arlene's business cards. So. Here you go. Wrong credit. If you thought it was gonna be a real one, they're only worth a couple hundred thousand dollars. We couldn't squeeze that out of CRNR to do that. Okay.
You always told me I was priceless.
You are priceless. So we're to the portion of the meeting that I think a lot of you are looking forward to, and that's presentations from from different folks. Just a favor, as you get up to make your presentation, if you have people here you'd like to introduce, John, please do that. Everybody. So, at this point, we do have a presentation from the esteemed and honorable Mayor of Costa Mesa, Mr. John Stevens.
Thank you very much. So we've got the city team here, we've got Cecilia Gallardo-Davis, our, sorry, Dale, Gallardo-Daly, our City Manager, and Alma Reyes, our Deputy City Manager, and Yves Torres, where's Yves? Is she here? There she is. And Sergio's here someplace, too, where's Sergio? Sergio Escobar. And so. So, we're all here to honor you, Arlene, and especially me, I mean, I, we're here with so many people that are so important to our community. You know, I look at Coach Art Perry, and Mike Schaefer, and all these people in the room, Alan Roder, John Morlock, it's like who's who of the history of Costa Mesa. And I will say this in going over this commendation that I'm gonna read, and I very rarely read commendations, but I want to do it in this case because you are singular, you're incomparable. Nobody, as as you will all learn, has contributed more to the city of Costa Mesa and to our community than you. And that is the truth, number one, number one in our hearts, number one in our programs, okay? So, everyone, I'm gonna read this. Thank you to Yves Torres, who collaborated with me on creating this commendation. And all I can say to you as I read this is, prepare to feel inadequate about your service and about your life, okay? Here goes. This is to Arlene Schaefer commendation from the city of Costa Mesa. Whereas Arlene Schaefer has dedicated over 50 years of exemplary public service to the city of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And whereas Arlene Schaefer grew up in San Diego and attended Woodbury University in Los Angeles before moving to Costa Mesa with her husband Jim, where they purchased their first home on the west side and later settled in College Park, College Park neighborhood in 1965, raising their children, Lynn, Jamie, and Karen, while becoming deeply rooted in the Costa Mesa community. Whereas Arlene began her public service on the Costa Mesa Planning Commission, City Council, and as mayor, where she championed policies that strengthened the community and enhanced the quality of life for all residents. Whereas Arlene made a history in 1974, over 50 years ago, as the first woman to serve on the Planning Commission, paving the way for women in leadership and inspiring generations of future leaders. Whereas during her time as mayor, Arlene and Newport Beach Mayor Jackie Heather came together on December 11, 1980, to declare a mayor exchange day, an occasion created to patch up the differences between the two cities, Newport Beach and Costa Mesa, and exchange ideas, proclamations, and keys to their respective cities as a gesture of unity and collaboration. And that collaboration continues to this day, I can tell you. Whereas in addition to serving as mayor and City Council Member, Arlene chaired the Costa Mesa Redevelopment Agency for three terms, providing strong leadership and vision for the city's growth and revitalization efforts, and left the City Council in 1986. Whereas, from 1986, 85 to 86, she also served as the Executive Manager of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce, further demonstrating her commitment to advancing Costa Mesa's economic vitality and community partnerships. Whereas in 1994, Arlene has served, sorry, sorry, since 1994, has served with distinction on the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors, including multiple terms as Board President and Vice Secretary, where she advanced environmental stewardship, sustainability, and reliable sanitation services. Whereas Arlene has been an active and cherished member of the Harbor Mesa Lions Club, bringing energy and creativity to community fundraisers, including helping host the lively Welcome to the Jungle Fashion Show and Luncheon, which features shopping, prizes, local sponsors and services. And she's she's already preparing for next year's fashion show, I can assure you that. I've got that on my calendar. Whereas, Arlene has been a steadfast advocate for transparency, collaboration, and community engagement, representing Costa Mesa at local, regional, and state levels, including service as Chair of the Local Agency for Formation of Commissions and active participant in the California Special Districts Association. Whereas, Arlene's legacy of service is also carried through her family, including her grandson, Ryan Kennedy, who proudly serves as a Costa Mesa firefighter and paramedic, further reflecting the Schaefer family's deep commitment to public service in the city of Costa Mesa. Whereas through her decades of commitment, Arlene has inspired generations of leaders in public servants, modeling the values of integrity, dedication, and compassion, while building partnerships that have benefited the residents of Costa Mesa. Whereas, as she retires from public service, Arlene leaves behind an enduring legacy that reflects her love for the community, her devotion to public service, and her belief in the power of civic engagement to improve lives. Now, therefore, I, John Stevens, Mayor of the great city of Costa Mesa, commend Arlene C. Schaefer for her exceptional public service service career and profound contributions to the city of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And I extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes for your retirement and future endeavors. And signed by me, the Mayor of the great city of Costa Mesa, John B. Stevens. There's no one like you, there never has been, there never will be. And I can say, I've been in public service now for about nine years. I would have to serve another 40 years to reach you. And I could tell you, I'm already exhausted, and I'm not, and I'm not gonna do it. So, so there will, there will really never be in the city of Costa Mesa anybody like you. Thank you so much for your service. It's such an honor to be here and to honor you on this day. Oh, oh, and I forgot, I got, so I got the commendation. I also have the key to the city. The key to the city. And, Arlene, you're the only person that I've given the key to the city to that we didn't change the locks after I gave you. And and I will say, I've only given about four keys to the city, and with all due respect to the others, you're much more deserving. And one of them won a gold medal. So, so congratulations, and we'll get a photo op. And I got some flowers for him.
All right.
Aww.
That's nice.
Thank you, Mayor, that was, well done. Before I introduce the next presentation, I need to introduce Arlene's daughter, Jamie, who's been so helpful in getting all this stuff, and her husband, Mike. So, guys, why don't you stand up and be recognized. It's a good thing Jamie looks like Arlene and not like her dad, James. Next presentation is from the Board President of Mesa Water, Mayor Steve Pescuali.
Hi, we should have had the mayor go last, that was too good, I don't know how to follow.
Really?
I graduated from UCI, I moved to Costa Mesa, I'm gonna be there like one year. I was in 1996. So I have no Costa Mesa memories that don't include Arlene. My entire Costa Mesa pedigree includes Arlene Schaefer. So, I moved here, it was near the airport, I thought, this is great. Only be here a year. Then a cute boy moved into my complex, and the rest is history, buy a house. Why would you ever leave Costa Mesa? So you leave shoes that will never be filled. And working with you in the last eight years since I've been on the board at Mesa Water, we haven't had a lot of interaction, but when I look back at your service in Costa Mesa, and then you add in LAFCO and Independent Special Districts, and you add in CSDA, and my colleagues here, Fred Bachmiller in the back and James Fissler over there, have spent much more time with you than I've had the privilege of doing, and I think would agree with me that the legacy of integrity that you have left for public service is unmatched. I won't mention different things, but you have stayed strong in your core values, who you are and what you believe in. And those of us that run and represent special districts have the joy of navigating the spider web that is Sacramento and well-intended things that then we have to explain to all the fine people of the area we serve who oftentimes don't like what we have to explain. So I have tremendous respect because you have been a voice that has stood up repeatedly and been a calm, steady, unwavering force in this community. So speeches like this are just a delay to everyone getting to eat the cheese and cupcakes. I don't know what more I could say other than the legacy you leave of integrity, leadership, and stepping up at a time when it was tough for women to step up and sit in those chairs on the dais and stay there. Well done, Arlene, you, this is, like, you are a Costa Mesa legend. It's an honor to be able to be here today and say that to you in person. So, we have a nice plaque for you that our whole board signed. I will leave that on the table and maybe run over, get a quick picture, but congratulations. This is, this is truly the end of you. Okay. Hold it, I'll. Got it? Yes, one more. Thank you. Thank you, you are welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, really appreciate it. As he usually was when we'd have board meetings, he's a little bit late, but I'm gonna recognize him anyway. And that's former Director Brett Echols has just entered the room, so, Brett, welcome. Yep, I did that up, by mistake. Next presentation is on behalf of Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norris. I think Michael is here to make that, there he is, it's all yours, bud.
Good afternoon, everyone. Arlene, hello. On behalf of Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norris, I want to extend our sincere gratitude to you, Arlene, for all of your service to the Sanitary District, the residents of Costa Mesa, and so many decades of great work to make this such a wonderful city. So I just wanted to share that on behalf of the Assemblywoman, and we have a plaque here. I just, a little reflection from from me as a member of the CAC, kind of a newer member of the city of Costa Mesa, Costa Mesa resident. When I moved here in 2020, it was the one and only city I wanted to move when I moved from LA to Orange County. Yeah, it had to do with the location, close to the beaches, close to the different locations, great restaurants. But it became clear when, being involved in civic life as well for many years, many decades, it came clear from people like you, those on the dais, those here, that this community truly is special, that people are so well-invested in the well-being of one another, that there was no other city to move in, and that's because of people like you, Arlene. And I'm so grateful for everything that you've done for the Sanitary District and the people of Costa Mesa. So I wanted to share that with you personally because of my just love for the city, my love for the people that served the city, and all the people that love and respect you as well. So congratulations, on behalf of the Assemblywoman. We're just grateful for everything you have done for all of us, thank you. Do this afterwards, but I also have a certificate, so we'll do that photo op afterwards.
Well done, Michael, you should run for office. Picture. Picture. Okay, next presentation, and thank you for fitting this into your busy schedule, Supervisor. Honorable Katrina Foley.
Well, it's great to be here, and I'm sorry, I was a little bit late because I was doing an interview with the Laguna Beach Talk Radio. But I am, you know, it's bittersweet to be here, Arlene. So, Arlene has given so much to the city of Costa Mesa and to the county of Orange. Oh, by the way, I'm Katrina Foley County Supervisor, representing the fabulous Fifth District, which covers Costa Mesa, where I live, where I was one of eight women mayors along with Arlene Schaefer, and I see Mary Hornbuckle is here. And where I got to know Arlene over the years as somebody who truly cares about public service and about giving to the community, whether it is here at the Sanitary District or working for us on the LAFCO Board at the county, or of course, for Harbor Lions and making sure that the community is served with charitable work that you've done over the years. And we all know how much you love the fashion show. So, Arlene, thank you. Thank you for giving so much of your life to the city of Costa Mesa and to the county of Orange. We are so grateful, and like I said, it's bittersweet to be here because, wow, I know that you are so dedicated to the work that you do here that it's gonna be, what are you gonna do with all the time? So, thank you, I'm just happy I was able to be here. I actually said to the team, you know, well, you don't have time, I go, no, we're going. So can I come over and give this to you?
Please do.
All right. Get a picture. You wanna leave this here or set it over there? Yeah. Okay. Okay, you got it?
Done, Nicole.
And I'll just say this, Arlene and I shared a political consultant who we lost this year, but I'll say, on behalf of Dennis, he also thanks you for your service.
Thank you, Supervisor, thanks for for fitting us in, thanks for fitting it in for her. Other presentations, do we? No, you're, we're gonna wait on you, just you just hang on. We have a. Give me a second. We have an honored guest here today. Guy came all the way from Sacramento just to honor Arlene, and that's the Executive Director of the California Special Districts Association, Mr. Neal. There he is.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have more things for you to hang on to. This is a resolution, and I'll touch on a few things, but joining me is Jo McKenzie. She's one of your other representatives here in the Southern Network and board members. and, um, board member on CSDA for a long time, worked very closely with Arlene, so I wanted Jo to say a few words as well.
Well, there's others that wanna make presentations, so I'm gonna do free, few words. I'm gonna miss you, because now I don't have a travel buddy anymore. I traveled from Sacramento, from San Diego to Sacramento. She goes from Orange County, John Wayne, and we used to get on the phone and coordinate flight times, so we got there within, you know, a few minutes to a half hour of each other, and then we were off and running. We had a great time. And I think we did a whole lot of good work on the, on the board. And she was president, and she encouraged me to run for President of CSDA Board, so I'm gonna miss you.
A lot of good words. So it is our honor to present this resolution, and, um, I know it's hard to believe, but there's actually more from what you've already heard in terms of what, uh, Arlene has done, and, um, I think Scott mentioned, thank you for hiring me. And you did too, actually, yes. Almost 24 years ago, it's hard to believe, actually. Um, 24 years that, that we started this process, and CSDA, because of Arlene, and a lot of very giving, uh, board members, but she's put in so much time, uh, in Sacramento, around Sacramento. Um, she's, uh, been on the board 25 years. Um, in addition to that, uh, starting in 2006, she came onto the CSDA Finance Corporation Board, so added another board on there. Um, she's also been on our, uh, Special Districts Alliance Executive Council, um, which is a group, and somebody talked about collaboration, and that's really what Arlene has pushed, I think, the whole time. And she's really made our board extremely solid, and not only with CSDA, but with our partners at the Finance Corporation, um, at SDRMA, the Special District Risk Management Authority. She's really done so much to, to foster collaboration and good governance, um, in not only CSDA, but in members, and I think you've all seen that, uh, throughout, uh, throughout her career as well. Um, I looked up, when she first started, CSDA had less than 400 members, agency members. Um, we now have 1,400 members, and a big part of that is Arlene's push for having districts be part of this. Districts stronger together, districts stronger together, that we're all working together, we're part of this bigger group to do better things for special districts. And she's really been, uh, the leader in pushing that. She was President of CSDA in 2008, um, and has done so much. She's been on every committee that we have, plus some ad hoc committees, task forces. But these are all committees that have really driven our strategic plan and our strategic goals, and she's been a huge part of that. So, thank you, Arlene, for all of your contributions. Personally, I'm really gonna miss working with you as well. We're gonna miss you in Sacramento, uh, and just spending time with you. I will be in touch. That may be a threat, but I'm, I'm going to contact you regularly. Uh, and I'm just so proud of, of the work that you've done, and you should be extremely proud. You've left a huge legacy at CSDA, um, and some big shoes to fill for the person coming in, uh, as well. So personally, professionally, um, we're presenting this resolution, um, in respect to you and everything that you've done, and appreciation for you, uh, and everything you've done for CSDA and for special districts statewide. So, thank you.
What Jo didn't mention was, we go to these conferences and meetings, and you'd see Jo and Arlene walking into a room, and you knew something either was up, or we were in trouble.
We were solving the problem.
Yeah, you were, you were solving some big problems, that's for sure.
And we solved them, too.
Thank you both. Thank you to Chris Palmer, who is our representative from CSDA here in the Southern area. Uh, next, we have Director Sandra Jacobs from the Rancho Santa Margarita Water District.
Hello, yes. You can't get much south than Santa Margarita Water District. I am Sandra Jacobs. And I have to say, for all of the 29 years that I have served on that board, I have known Arlene, and you've been a great mentor to me. I didn't bring anyone else with me, because no one else was as deserving. I didn't, I didn't bring anything to, for you to hang on your wall, so you'll probably thank me for that later. Did bring you some beautiful orchids for you to take home, and I'll read to you what I wrote. Dear Arlene, your 40-plus years of service is a remarkable achievement. We all hope your next adventure is even more remarkable and exciting. You will be missed. Always the Board of Directors, the General Manager, and all the staff at Santa Margarita Water District. And finally, I wrote you a personal retirement haiku. You climbed to the top. You have achieved great milestones. Listen to the calmness. Thank you.
Are there other presentations, anyone? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Um, we're gonna move to closing items, and part of public meetings is we, uh, encourage folks to make public comments. I'm not gonna read the litany here, but you're more than welcome if there's anyone who would like to get up. Normally, we have, your, your time's coming, Robert. Of course. You'll be last on the agenda, don't worry. So, normally, we say you have five minutes to speak. If something gets thrown at you, it's coming from Nolani, so it's not coming from me. But, uh, public comments, when you come up, introduce yourself, and, uh, looks like we have our first public comment from Sue Lester.
Hello, Arlene. My name's Sue Lester. I've lived in Costa Mesa now for 17 years. And I'm currently the Chair of the Citizen Advisory Committee, so I've had the opportunity over the last seven years to work closely with her here at the district. In addition to the 50-plus years of public service, and all of your accolades that everybody's mentioned, I think it's important to bring up just what a good person you are. And what I'm gonna miss most is your beautiful smile that greets everybody at every event. I've had the opportunity to volunteer with you for the Lions Club, for so many different organizations in so many places. And you don't just show up for the photo op. You show up, and you get in there, and you help, and you talk to people, and you make the experience better. I appreciate everything that you have done, and I'm, I'm grateful for the example that you have left other people to emulate. And I also admire and respect you putting yourself first, for once, and taking this time to enjoy your family, and see what the next chapter holds for you. And I just want to thank you for being my friend, and for being a mentor, and you're my neighbor, so you can't get too far away. But, uh, I, I hope that we can continue to see that beautiful face of yours. It, it would mean a lot to all of us, so thank you. And I do have something for you. It's a card, and I hate to break it to you, there's no cash in it.
In case you missed it, Sue is the Chairman of our Citizens Advisory Committee, and we appreciate the work that, that she does. Julie.
Good afternoon, Julie Beretta, CRNR. And I want to speak to you on behalf of the CRNR family. Uh, Mike is here, who also got here late, so I'd like to point it out to, Mike was later than Brett. There you go, Brett. Anyway, it's such an honor, uh, to have worked with you for the last several years. We were very excited to, uh, participate in the parade in front of your home last week. Uh, but we also did bring you some flowers and a card signed by all of the drivers that provide service, uh, in the City of Costa Mesa. So, congratulations on your retirement, and I'm sure we will see you around. Thank you.
Former Director Brett Echols.
The tardy, tardy former director.
All right, bud.
Apologies, but, um, what a privilege it is to be here and be on this side of the dais, and, uh, it's kinda different. But I had the privilege to serve with Arlene for the past four years. And when I say it's a privilege, I mean it. It was, uh, day one, I was the rookie. In the fourth year, I was still the rookie. And, uh, learned, learned a lot sitting next to you up on the dais. And, uh, the, the best part is, and all those who know her, which everyone here, I think, knows her, uh, very well, grace, dignity, and kindness. That's how you served in the four years that I got to. You also brought a lot of class and style to balance the rest of us guys out up there.
No doubt.
Every two weeks, I'd come home, my wife Kelly would be like, what did Arlene wear tonight? And every time, I'd got to, uh, show her either on the Zoom or whatever, and she goes, she does have style. And had to at least balance, uh, Mike Schaefer out a little bit.
They make these shirts in my size.
But, um, you know, public services, uh, there, there's far, uh, there's few things better than that, and you exemplify public service. And your career, and, uh, all those who presented before me, I'm sure went over all the, uh, highlights in the years that you've given to this community. There's nothing better, um, other than obviously, your family, and, uh, friends, and all that that you've given to them, and given to our community. It's something to be proud of. Everyone here, and everyone in our community is gonna certainly miss you, but with a debt of gratitude and thanks for the years of service you've given. It is much appreciated, and now, go enjoy some little bit more free time. I have a feeling, uh, you'll fill it very quick, and if nothing else, I hope to see you at the Legion for a cocktail soon. So, congratulations.
Thanks for most of that, bud. Are anyone else? All right, if that's all the public comment, uh, the last item we have is board and staff comments. I'm gonna ask Art Perry, any, any comments?
A little side story. I think I've had connections with Arlene much longer than Mike. Because when I went to Ray Junior High at 13 years old, we used to throw stuff over the fence, and we didn't know it was her pool. But then, but then when I met her later in life, she told me she didn't like those guys at Ray, because they kept throwing stuff in her pool, and I have to admit, I was, I was one of them. Uh, Arlene is a tremendous person in Costa Mesa, and will be remembered by all of us. She's then contributed so much time and effort for the betterment of the citizens of Costa Mesa. You couldn't ask for a better person to receive all these accolades today. So, congratulations, Arlene, and thank you. And I'm sure I'm gonna be going back to her for more suggestions and ideas, but thank you, Arlene.
Okay, the time has come for Director and Vice President, Robert Ooten.
He gets 10 minutes.
You know, I came on board in 2006 with Arlene, um, and, uh, she's been a there is help, me, uh, the Lord of the District, and you know, I told her I wouldn't give away her age, um, but, um, she and I are about the same age, and I dated Mrs. Claus. Or she wasn't Mrs. Claus. Arlene and I are old enough, so we were teenagers before television was invented. You know, we were, I was elected, both of us were elected, and she was re-elected in 2006, in the Sanitary District. And, well, Arlene and I were being sworn in, and she took me aside and, uh, gave me some advice, uh, and then, and a lot of other things, which I can't talk about due to the problem that so, you know, Arlene, um, I was gonna ask John Stevens to help me with this, and I'm afraid that the tree will this is something that Arlene probably didn't end in her youth.
Now you can see why I'm always nervous about giving him the mic. Thanks, Bobby. He laughs harder at his own jokes than we laugh at his jokes. Right, Cheryl? Staff, anybody else from staff that has anything? Well said. Can you turn that thing off, please? So, we've come to the time that, uh, um, is probably the hardest, and that's telling her how much we love her. Telling her how we're gonna fix it. And it's been mentioned, all of us have, have used one word that resonates with me, and that's mentor. And, um, I'm gonna miss having her sit next to me, and gonna miss our chats from a, from this level, but, uh, we won't be strangers. If you ever wanna change the spelling, just let me know, and we'll go to, we'll go to the court and get it fixed. But, uh, I'd like to introduce to you for the last time, my great friend, my mentor, and just a really terrific person, Arlene Schaefer.
Thank you.
It can take longer than five minutes. You can just go right ahead.
How do I begin to thank everybody in this room? You know, every one of you have played an important part in my life, and I've really enjoyed it. And I really wanted you to be here, if you had to be here, for me. So, I, I, you know, I, I don't think about all the things that I've done in life. I think how, how much it meant to me to be out there and doing things, and enjoying everybody, and the challenge that we all had. And we all did have a challenge, so, and you still have it. And you, you will go on having the challenge as long as we exist. So, it, it's so important that we come together like this, and, and that we're all feeling the same way that things are being done that are important to us. And this room is very important to us. Everybody in this room means something. Everybody means something. And I just wanted to let you know that I, I hired that one, too. My manager, my manager didn't say that, but but he meant to, didn't you? Anyway, but I really appreciate having all of you here, and I, all the times I've been up in, Costa Mesa, and then traveled all the way to, uh, other areas. And I'm really gonna miss what's coming up for CSDA. I wish I could go to it. And, um, I'll still try some way, but it, it really, it means a lot to me to have all of you here. Each one of you meant so much to me, and you just don't understand that. But friendships are friendships. And we've got it right here in this room. So thank you so much for being part of it, and making me realize so many good and bad things about me. Thank you.
And by virtue of, uh, the fact that I've got the hammer, we're adjourned. And by virtue of the fact that I've got the hammer, we're adjourned.
Free to partake in the board outside. Thanks for coming. Goodbye.